Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over forty artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, ten a.m. to five p.m., and Sundays, one to five p.m.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks for coming. Hi there.
Hi there.
Okay, we've got minutes from the May first meeting.
I'd make a motion, we approve the minutes for the May first meeting for twenty-three. About a second down.
All fair and sound. Then we have payroll, amount of two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. How are you?
Doing good, how are you?
Life peaceful?
Pretty mellow Monday.
Good.
But a...
Good.
Make a motion, we approve payroll of the amount of two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy... One second down.
All fair and sound.
All right.
All right. Fifteen today.
Yes. Isn't it? Doing good, how about yourself?
All right, then we have the payroll accounts payable voucher to approve. Knowledge receivable, I guess.
Make a motion, make knowledge receivable. Payroll claims, the amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and forty-six.
One second down.
It's kind of tiny this time. Yeah, doing good, good.
All right, then we have an out-of-cycle check here to Effie Moran, fire protection. Do we know what that's for?
It's for when they installed the fire protection in the courthouse.
Oh, the investigator, yeah, okay.
They sent two invoices, but somehow before I took office...
One got lost.
Got lost.
All right.
So the money was budgeted last year, and we've already encumbered it over, so...
I'd make the motion, and then we authorize an out-of-cycle check to Effie Moran for the fire initiation system in the courthouse, of ninety-six thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars.
One second down.
All fair and sound.
All right. Surprised they hadn't met on it long before.
Yeah.
Well, it was two invoices, and one was dated September the twentieth of twenty-two, and the other one was dated like November twenty-two.
Good to know it's taken care of.
It will go out tomorrow.
Okay. Then we have the stop-loss information here from Brown &amp; Brown, a currency carrier. I believe I already signed these.
They sent me the originals to be signed.
Okay, I did electronically, so let's just do those, and that'd be fine. Okay, what this is, is for the stop-loss agreement. It says they match all the numbers we presented during the renewal process last year, and they just need me to sign on seventh inch. We really already approved these, right? We didn't even sign contracts.
I was just saying, I forgot to send them two. Do you want a copy of those tomorrow?
Yeah, you might send me a signed copy or whatever.
Well, do you want all the other information with it, or you just want that one packet that has the signed copy?
Just the signed packet.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Cassie, planning commission.
At our April meeting, twenty-seventh of April, planning commission approved phase two of Chuck Jackson's Nettles State subdivision, phase two, which was four seventeen additional lots.
Okay.
The plat that will have to be recorded is there in front of Bruce that needs your signatures, and then Marion has the ordinance approving that needs your signatures.
Have you seen that, Nicky, okay? You want to see it?
Sure.
Make sure there's no sprays on it.
It was already approved, correct?
Yeah, the planning commission has already approved it.
I just want to make sure the ordinance is correct.
Page three of the plat is the page that requires your signatures.
Want to see you pass up here and out again. You can pass that order, so if you want to get that and make the sign, then it's pretty good. So there's twenty-one lots?
Seventeen new lots.
Seventeen. The first, I believe, seven lots were approved back in June last summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that they went back and revised it, if I remember right, because some of these wasn't going to be large enough, or there was an issue with them.
That was on the first...
The first.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'm okay. I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three-oh-one.
Yeah.
That basically approves the submitted plat for the Nettles subdivision, phase two.
About a second down.
Will you say you approve the ordinance for the Nettles subdivision? All fair and sound.
All right.
Close. Okay.
I think you should have signed that yet.
Yeah, I hadn't signed it yet.
Okay, and...
Mary needs to...
Got to record it.
It has to be on too.
And if you just add...
Yeah.
All right. I'll take it, and sort it back together, get it back to Cassie. So they recorded off. I don't bother so often sharing, you know?
I'll try.
I'm filling up here, doing my stuff.
The motion to adopt same day was on there, too.
It's included in ordinance now, right? Is that what you did?
Yeah, it should have been on the last page somewhere, so you should have signed on the ordinance.
Oh, I didn't, okay, you signed it out.
Yeah.
All right.
You had signed both.
There's all three pages.
Oh, so that was marked, okay, we're...
All three pages are inside.
Okay, I'll just get a copy of it in the morning so that Chuck can have a copy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, good seeing you. All right, we got the school fund report somewhere here, there it is.
It's due May the thirty-first, but as I was filling it out, I pulled up last year's to make sure I was doing it right, and I went back four years, and they've been wrong since two thousand nineteen. And I called them, I said, "What do I need to do about?" She said, "Just resubmit them correctly and mark on there that it's a correction to the original, so I need to sign all of them."
Okay.
But they reported, well, on two of them, they reported the interest wrong, but because that changed the ending balance, and you take the ending balance and put it over to the next year, so they were all wrong.
And what can the money be used for?
It's for congressional school interest, and it goes back to the schools.
Okay, I didn't know if it ever left here or not.
No, twice a year we leave schools.
Twice a year, okay. The principal part can never clean unless Congress...
That's what I was thinking about, just the interest is what they can use.
Correct.
It's in a C D, so we can't touch it.
Yeah, now there, I believe the law still allows you to make loans, if it's like a mortgage loan, that's, I don't know, three thousand dollars or something like that. So if somebody walked in your office and said, "I want a loan from the congressional school," the law does talk about, you can use it. So if somebody does that, you got tied up in a C D, you may have to cash out a C D.
There are five places where it's fine.
You'd want to come here first, though?
Yeah, probably. Quirky thing. If I told this story, I've tried for years to get that one, I think just eliminated, because it serves no purpose.
Right.
Absolutely no purpose. Schools get four hundred dollars or something.
Less than that.
Yeah, and it's like...
One school gets like forty-some dollars.
Yeah, what you do to... But it's a federal thing, so Congress has to make that decision.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen. It's just our state legislature doing it.
Why go ahead if you need to?
I can give a dust in sometimes.
I can wait, right? Cassie's doing it also, you got to watch her, she's going to fall out of the chair in a minute here. Okay, so the only other new business we have here is for Matrix Integration, it's for backup, it's for iCloud access.
And Randy says it's...
Got to have it, yeah. This is where, one of our protections against the malware stuff is just having storage backup in cloud, and that's why this access is...
I just need my signature.
Okay, it's for three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars, so I make the motion, we approve contract with Matrix Integration for backup server appliance.
And I'll submit that.
All fair and sound. I've got a couple things that are business, before we move on to department here real quickly. Aerial photo, they were going to do those photos tomorrow of the paint job on Coxville Dome. The architects bring a drone in to do that, but the weather was going to be bad, so they have moved that, and Don says that's going to be Thursday now, seven-thirty or eight o'clock, if you're available to come and watch me do that stuff. I got a call today from Marshall Leadership. Randy, the question was, as the state said anything, I guess they're using Marshall Road to deliver dump truck loads of material out to forty-seven, where they're working, instead of running on forty-seven? Any, and I know they can, because it's public pro, but have they said anything about that they tear it up at all, if they're going to pay anything for that?
No, I haven't heard anything.
Do we need to contact them and see if they have to be using that road all the time for the dump truck traffic, or?
Yeah.
They're working on forty-seven.
Yeah, is it to regrind, or I don't know if they started grinding it on yet, or no?
I don't know either.
I don't know.
I went out there, we're just working on the shoulders for quite a few miles, so you were tearing up parts of shoulders.
Yeah, that's what I thought they were doing.
Putting some blacktop.
Yeah.
I assumed they repaved the whole thing once they're done with that.
I thought they were going to come through and grind it all, too, after they got the wedges all done.
I don't know, that was last...
I don't know if...
Last Thursday.
Maybe Bob Hale kind of hold up in some way, maybe he's getting some of the junk and tearing it up.
He just says they're using it from Marshall up to, so it sounded like he was calling painting materials, what he thought, but maybe it's not, maybe they're not at that point yet, I don't know. He was just concerned about the road getting trashed from all the dump trucks and loading dump trucks, and I don't know why they couldn't use their own highway, but then they're going to tell us, "We use their highway when we haul stuff," so I didn't hear that coming. I just didn't know if they made an arrangement with you or not.
I'll get hold of somebody, I'm all set on it.
Okay. Update on Coxville Bridge, you know, we got the tree off the bridge, and it's a huge tree, I got pictures here, ladies, you need to see, it's about a five-foot diameter tree, it's just huge. If it had been fifty feet closer to the bridge, you would have taken the bridge out, but just the top of it got the bridge and part of a smaller maple tree that was there, but plane tree experts volunteered to remove it, and they did a great job, I was down there with them when they were doing that, and they just did a great job of getting it off. Now we can make the evaluation, I talked to Randy this morning about that, had to order, of course, we use rough sawn stuff like it should be, rather than lumberyard lumber to repair those old bridges with. He said they'll have that Tuesday, and then we'll take a few days in to make repairs after that, but it is advice, and I agree, it's probably the bridge should stay closed until then, because things are loose and not fixed, and sure as we don't, somebody, someone will fall on somebody, and we'll get that, so. I talked to Blake Dollinger from Channel Ten, he called today about it, and I told him what Randy told me, so probably sometime by the end of next week, maybe open, you think three or four days of work with the, being able to make the repairs, or?
I don't know, it may be a little more than that.
Okay, so maybe the following week, then?
Yeah.
Okay. There is a tree next to it, the one that came down, that could also come down, and it's equally, equal in size, and they're just huge, but we could have that topped, and then it's like, and Landor's fine with that, because if it goes the other direction, it's going to hit his house, too. So my suggestion would be that we just, and Lane's going to give me a price, he thought he'd have one today, but he hasn't got one yet, but he has tonight, I don't know what that's going to cost, but we have plenty of money in the cover bridge fund, the repair fund to do that with, I want to talk about that in a minute or two, but, so my suggestion is we have that one topped, and it's just, it doesn't leave this Landor's tree, but he's fine with this dropping and topping it, so if you're okay with that, I'll go ahead and okay that with Lane, and when I get a number, I'll contract it.
That's good.
It's okay if you do, I have to plan on that, and we're just planning on doing that. Then we have another tree, that's a real problem, on Jackson Bridge, on the east side of Jackson Bridge, about a third of the way across the bridge from the south to the north, it's a huge, big stump, and most of that's broken off, but there's new growth coming out of it, but some of the new growth is probably ten, ten, twelve inches, I suppose, and it is broken off, two of them broken off, looks like, I got a picture of that, too, and it's leaning on top of our bridge. Complicated part on that is Bloomingdale's phone has lines running right along the edge of the bridge from pole to pole across the creek, and so those lines could be in jeopardy when that comes off there, too. So that needs to come off there, because it's going to sit there rubbing on that roof all summer long if we don't get it off. So I asked them also to give me a price on getting that off. R and Z wasn't interested, they didn't want to touch it. You could feasibly get down off the road there to it, down bottom of the hill, but it's, it's just really rough and really muddy right now, too muddy now anyway, so if it's okay with you guys, I'll get with Randy on that, too, then we'll see if we can contract them to cut that back off the bridge as well.
I would say, before it does more damage, just do it.
Because if you get much windstorm is blowing back and forth, it's going to be just scraping out of roof all the time, it needs to come off of. So I'll, I'll contract them as well, then if that's okay with you, then once I get the actual numbers, we'll come and get those approved. I talked with the council, we are in the process, Senator Deary approved, got passed a bill to allow the endweepers tax to go from five percent to eight percent for a couple of bus counties who have not been able to raise ours, while other counties have raised ours, because we're in a different category of establishment of C V Cs with the state, but now we can. And so we talked about that in C V C, we talked about that a couple weeks ago, I mean, about a month ago now, I guess, at the council meeting prior to this one, Thursday. And our hope as C V C then was, because that three percent, sixty percent increase, that could be maybe a hundred thousand dollars more, and that's an opportunity then for people outside the county to help pay for keeping these structures intact going, because we would then spend, hopefully, on two or three bridges like the C V C does now. But the intent of the increase was to allow that new money to go into public safety, so they could help the fire departments have to make runs to the parks and those types of things. So what our proposal from the C V C is going to be to us, and then we can do with it as we choose, would be that as those dollars come in, we, we agree that we're going to commit so much to cover bridge repair and maintenance, and then another fraction of that then to go to the county for public, public health, and they're fine with that, too, because it is taking care of the tourism when they come, so people at the park that end up having to have calls out there all the time for bites or falls or loss or whatever happens. So if that's okay with you guys, I'll go ahead and plan on getting a proposal together and bring it to us and see what we got along those lines. There is, however, considerable dollars in cover bridge repair fund, which I didn't know existed, and there's a lot of things, Dan and I have talked before, and Randy and I have talked before, there's a lot of things in those covered bridges that, maintenance-wise, that could be done, but just don't get done, because I understand, I mean, the time is the time, but we've talked for several years about the dirt collecting on top of the arches, that we don't get down and clean those out on a regular basis, and that needs to be done. We've had some paint jobs that the C V C has suggested get done, and they do those. We replace the siding on the Mecca Bridge, we're replacing the siding just here on the one there by Rosedale, what the heck's it called? Thorford Bridge, yeah, so that's going to be replaced. So we're doing good, but to me, it makes sense, because it is such a concern to me, and I think to most, most of the people, I think, in the county who care so much about these bridges. I would like to discuss at least with you guys at some point, creation of a cover bridge commission, call it whatever you want to call it, but a group of people, including Randy and, and us, all of us, or one of us, or whatever it takes, and whatever our interest of party might be, to on a regular basis look at the bridges, and we can hire, we can hire, instead of having the highway department have to hire an employee, like you were talking about, that did that maintenance work, we could just contract somebody who'd do those maintenance work and pay on a per bridge basis, maybe, if that's...
That's a possibility.
And you make a, you make a list of what needs to be done on those inspections, let's, I mean, you should certainly be on that commission, too, because that's, you're the cover bridge guy. Let's figure out what we can do, not what Randy does or what his crew does, but things that we can do to help with the maintenance on those.
I see what you're getting at.
There are some ends of bridges that need to be painted from time to time, there's just to dress them up, which is not a real requirement, so Randy's not really responsible for those, and because it's not bridge maintenance, it's, it's more of a decorative thing for attraction kind of time thing, so, and there's about three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars or so on this cover bridge repair fund that we could use for that, it wouldn't take anywhere near that, and I understand the purpose of having that bridge, if we have a big repair we have to make, I understand having that there, so I don't tend to spin it down, but there certainly is dollars there that could be used for that kind of maintenance if we wanted to do that, so if you're okay with that, I'll ponder that some more, and you think about that, too, and see what kind of things that, that commission could contract out to do. Still, expect Randy to do like he does with the repairs and stuff when that happens, and that's bridge, that's road stuff, I don't want to interfere with that, but there's some things we could do to make them better than they are, and to keep a better eye on them, maybe, even go along with things that have to happen. I know some of the troughs that collect the water down to the hill, there's a grate there that water goes into, but they get full of dirt sometimes, and they don't do their job. So that would have something else we could contract out to get cleaned out on a regular basis, and have a checklist that people, they come along, could see, "It's time to go check these again," or whatever, and just get some kind of regular, long-term schedule on how to do that stuff. So between, certainly you and me and Randy, whoever else might be interested in that kind of thing, we could figure out some kind of a plan, it wouldn't have to be Randy's dollars to do that with, we could use the cover bridge dollars to do that. And I think if we establish, because I could ask a lot, if we establish a cover bridge commission just to take care of those bridges, there's, I think a lot of people would donate to that kind of thing.
Yes.
I'll do that as well, where they won't donate just to the county, because they don't know where it's going, you know, and what's going to happen to it, but they would specific for that, so something to think about, so we'll get with Randy and us, and we'll figure out.
I'd want to keep in mind, though, we do have a voucher bridge coming up.
Yes, we do.
That may break the count.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be a bunch. So we'll just see what there is, was available, and that, that really gets about seventy-five thousand a year, Roy said about seventy-five thousand a year, so, so even if we had thirty or forty thousand a year to spend on maintenance type stuff, it'd be worth, be money well spent to do that kind of thing. So we'll, we'll work on that, and go that direction. Let's see what else I got. See if it's making way too much. Yeah, I was thinking things like tree cutting and the painting, siding repairs, roof repairs, and painting, arts meeting, that kind of stuff, so we can take care of all that stuff. I need to have an executive session at some point for the same as we had before, different, different person, different issue on employee performance. You guys have a date in mind that would work best for you, or you want to meet just before our next meeting? Maybe a half hour before the next meeting, you do it that way?
Okay. Because you're for some always, you know, you're always blocked that day off.
Yeah, that's, that's going to work best for me, too.
Okay, that date could be, be June fifth. Are you here at four o'clock, you want to call at three o'clock?
Wait that long, if that's the three week...
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not a crucial thing, no. It's just something we have to plan, plan for and work on, and see where we are.
Yeah, that's fine, for the next meeting.
So it'll be June fifth, so for the paper, we'll be, we'll be having an executive session for employee performance on June fifth at three o'clock, okay?
Yeah, that's what I'm moving now.
Okay. Put that in here. All right, and I think that's all I've got. Yep, all I got, you guys got anything new? Okay. All right, then, let's go departments, Jason.
I don't have any reports today, but I want to be here in case you guys need anything.
Okay. That meeting you're having is only eighteenth?
Yes, this Thursday.
Are you available for that?
Yeah, I'm going to be there.
I'd like to, but it's AIC, but I make them anyways, I just don't know that I need to, I'm perfectly willing to, but...
I've talked to you, and you, I did talk to Shay, is he still going to make it? He talked like he probably will.
Last, last time I talked to him, that's my understanding.
And then either your booth, if you have time, you want to come?
Say, AIC meeting, and I'll, I'll see if I can. Let's just make that...
Seven o'clock.
Seven, seven P M. on Thursday.
Let's make that as clear as we can, because I know there's some stuff on chatter and sites about, about the talk about closing some roads in Bridgeton, let's just clarify that, that no, no decision been made, no plan has been submitted, but the idea is, is to ease the, and protect people walking on the main street during cover bridge time, during the day, during cover bridge time. Everybody would have access, as they always have access, nobody's going to be kept from their homes, in fact, it may be, you may learn that it's actually quicker going these other ways that are being proposed, but no proposal has been set yet, nothing has been set yet, and no one is going to be inconvenienced by that to the point that it can't be done for those ten days of the festival, so I just want to clarify that, at least, that's somebody's thought, their rumor was that we were going to close the roads and people couldn't get to their houses, and none of that is true, of course, so, just, just so you know what that's about. And that meeting is on the eighteenth, Thursday, at Column General Store at seven o'clock.
That's it.
All right, Randy, what you got?
I have a whole lot. We started recycling Martin Road today.
Good.
I did send out letters two weeks ago now, and... I did send out letters two weeks ago now and never heard anything.
Well, he's talking about this road's really, really beaten up and he, he suggests that we grind it up and put stone on it and then chip seal it.
Double chip.
Yeah, for, but stone needs to be down for a year ahead of time. So he's sent letters to everybody along the road there, just let them know that it's not gonna be paved, it's gonna be ground back up, it's gonna be stone, but it's gonna be back to double chip seal after a year if it's gonna take a minute to get things settled down so the holes still will fill in. Okay, what else you got?
Then we're planning on starting on the Roseville Bridge next week. And also planning on starting dust control next Monday.
Okay.
We're still patching. Getting down, we're less of them now, but we still got a little ways to go. And also the grade all's down, so I ran another excavator so Mike can keep putting in pipes.
Good.
Stuff. We got a few more to do on three fifty North, one we're gonna pay this year. We'll get that done.
Have you heard from anybody when the painting is gonna start?
No, I called Thursday, I think it was, or Wednesday, Thursday I think it was. And it's supposed to come back. Bud, I think, who's been higher up with file stone.
Okay.
And we'll get a ditching bucket and an excavating bucket for some new book jobs.
Okay, good.
So that's about all I have.
Okay.
Has something to me.
I, I was wondering, you, you mentioned Melcher Bridge. Have you heard anything on D and R permit or any of that?
No, they're, they're asking more questions.
Are they?
Yeah, as usual.
Which is typical.
Yeah.
And what kind of questions do they ask? Are you gonna determine soil?
What kind of coffer then you're gonna have? Is it gonna be an expert crew doing it?
Oh, no, we're getting a bunch of guys at Lally Hills and it's gonna come shovels and see if we can do something with it.
Things like that. How many trees you gonna have come down?
What'd he say?
You can ask her, she's been dealing with it for two weeks. We haven't been on job up north on forty-one and...
Just amazing.
And actually, it wasn't even the D and R yet, it hadn't even made it to them. They had approved it, but...
When we talked that day, Randy talked, they're talking about, it was months before you get a permit. Months.
Yeah, six, minimum pretty much six months.
Yeah, that's just crazy. We got stuff to do. Okay.
Of course, we wanna know if you've got any plans on the bridge.
No, we don't, we're just gonna wing it and see what happens. If it falls off, we'll stick it back up.
No, I meant on the original.
Oh, I got you, I got you, original plan. Do we?
Not that I know of.
It was amazing, we had the ones from the bridge.
It's probably lost in the fire, I imagine.
Are you? Okay.
Okay.
Nothing for us? How about your staff? Are you employed? Are you full?
Uh, not quite, almost.
Okay.
They themselves not too short.
Okay.
But a lot of them are non-CDMs.
Yeah, right. How many C D L records do we have now?
I think I got just enough, about twelve, I think.
Just enough in trucks.
Something like that.
Okay, okay. All right. You guys don't have anything, is it? Probably got anything? Am I got any comments, anything? Glad to see you here again, thanks for coming. If you ever got questions or anything, just let, let us know.
Absolutely.
No one else?
Did you go and say something about that?
Oh, I am, yes. Glad you said that. Couple things there. You guys, this, you got from John, is we had talked before about, I don't know where the legislation went about requiring this, if this was done this year or not, but it's gonna happen where we're gonna be required to have live streaming of our, of our meetings all the time, which we've, we are so far ahead of the game on this, but you just can't keep doing it for free, obviously. So we're gonna have to have it, so we're gonna have to hire someone. My suggestion is we hire what we already have. He's just got a proposed budget here, nothing, nothing locked in, nothing concrete, just a, just a proposal. We'll probably have to bid it, I suppose, if we're gonna do that. Will we have to bid that, that service?
It depends on cost, but yeah, I'd have to look at it.
Okay, so you wanna look at that, see, just take that with you. And then I'll get another copy from John later and we'll look at that. We have, from Cars, we have a letter here requesting an increase. Oh, thanks, an increase. Marion thought it was about five thousand that we paid.
I'm not positive.
But she's not positive that number's right, but it is an increase, and an increase to fifteen thousand for the fiscal year. This is from Cars here, Mark Nolan's the chairman of the board and Biggs Wyman, he's president, CEO, asking for an increase, but I don't think we approve this increase. I think this goes down to the council for a budget item. I don't remember ever approving a support letter for Cars.
I don't remember anything from Cars either.
So Marion's gonna forward this to the council then, that's where we think it probably needs to be rather than to... And then we just got a notice here that Duke Energy is gonna be spraying rights away with herbicides June first to September thirtieth. Doesn't really give a location of where these are.
Down the bottom, it's on US thirty-six.
Oh, yeah, yeah, west, yeah, west US thirty-six, so just letting us know they're gonna be spraying and that's what that's for. And that's all I've got, I think. Nobody, anything? Nope.
I would like to major.
Second?
Second.
And we're done. Thanks for coming, folks.